Ascension Parish Planning and Zoning Commission Session is now in order. Could you all rise as we say the pledge of allegiance?
Let your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the first. Okay. Vocal staff, please note that all committees available with the exception of the Chair, Mr. Maury Bishop. Staff, would you introduce yourself, please?
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Ben Moran, Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Tim Ward, Engineering.
Mike Petty, Senior Project Manager.
The comments will be related to other individuals here for the two items on the zoning commission, Items A and B, their zoning review for new singular wireless. You need not be here at this time.
Have they been pulled?
That being said, move on with the agenda. Can I get a motion for the last month's meeting to accept?
Minutes? Yeah, I move to approve the minutes from the last planning meeting.
I second.
So noted, the commission has accepted last month's meeting.
You've got to do the other one, do the joint meeting that we have.
Is that the first?
That's 7B.
Approval or denial of the minutes, we've done those. Joint Planning Commission Meeting Minutes, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I so move to approve the minutes of the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
So noted. First item, number 8A, Consent Agenda, Affidavit of Mortgage Declaration.
We notified the bank that is holding the mortgage on the property that the applicant was going, had applied to subdivide, and I received a letter from them stating that they are not authorized to share any of the borrower's information with me. I sent a letter to the surveyor to tell him, and the applicant has filled out an authorization form and sent it to the bank, authorizing them to share information regarding their mortgage with the Parish of Ascension and their surveyor. So, we let, we let them know that they're attempting to subdivide it, and we ask them to tell us whether they object or don't object. They didn't do neither.
Ben, if they object, are we obligated to reject the affidavit? I mean...
If they actually objected, then that was the whole intent of us doing this type of notification. What we're saying is they sent a letter that doesn't object or not object, they didn't really answer our request. And so, we're leaving it up to you guys if we want to postpone it for 30 days, or if you want to approve it contingent on us getting a letter that says it, but they didn't answer the question we sent them.
I think now that the applicant has sent this form into them, allowing them to share information with us, maybe we will get a yes or no from them.
So, if we just postpone this till next month, then that would, would stop the division for a month, right?
Yes.
But we would be protecting the mortgage company in case there was a problem.
Well, I will move that we, we table the consent agenda item until next month.
A second?
Yeah.
Mr. Burgess.
All in favor?
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
So noted.
It's Mr. Ferg.
Item number 9A, Samuel Flint Properties.
James Fauger representing Mr. Samuel Flint and Earls and Associates on the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
No comments, oh no.
I move that we approve the family partition.
Do you have any public comments? Anyone signed up, any public comments?
Close.
Motion?
You have to close, with the minutes you have to close, though.
We close.
The public hearing, yeah.
Close the public hearing, and this time request a motion.
I move that we, we accept the, approve the family partition.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted.
Thank you.
9B, Carol Clark Properties.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Dave Fazekas with Benchmark Group. I represent Lyle LeBlanc, who's asking for a family petition. This family petition, we are subdividing one acre. However, the front part of the property has about 12 hundreds of an acre that is inside this highway right away, the property line's in the middle of the road. So, both pieces of land are a half acre, but we only have 38 hundreds of an acre that is usable on the front part. Now, we went to the Board of Adjustments last month, and they didn't have a meeting because they didn't have a quorum. So, we're asking for approval contingent on the approval of the waiver for the half acre in the front. The, the client is here, if anybody has any questions, but that's the condition that we're asking for.
You requested a waiver because the front part is less than a half acre usable?
That's correct, yeah. It has a half acre, but 11 hundreds, or 12 hundreds of it is inside the road right away, on Bluff Road.
Is, is the Board of Adjustments the only entity that can approve a variance, or, I mean, is that what we're talking about with a waiver of variance? So, it has to go through them first?
Yes, sir, it'd need to go through them, and they would have to grant the variance for them to be able to divide the property if you make a motion to...
We could approve this contingent upon that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I worry about these contingencies sometimes. I mean, does that put an implication on us at all with...
No.
Contingent that whatever requirements need to be fulfilled.
Yeah. I guess we just have to trust that it works itself out, and it will not be approved till that contingency is met.
If they don't approve it, it, it just doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be revoked.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I don't think our, our approval obligation is...
And this would hold them up an additional 30 days subdividing this property without doing that. Yeah. And that's, that's worth it.
Open the floor for public hearing. Anyone signed up? Anyone from the public? At this time, we close public hearing. Need a motion?
I move for approval.
Contingent upon...
Yeah, let me say that for sure. I definitely, I move for approval contingent upon the Board of Variance approval on the, the less than half acre on the front lot.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted.
Thank you.
Robert LaSalle Jr. Property.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates, representing Mr. Robert LaSalle Jr., subdividing some property to give to his grandchildren. We've addressed all comments, asking for your approval.
We have no comments on this one, recommend approval.
Open the floor for public comments, public hearing. Anyone signed up? No comments? Close the floor for public hearing. I need a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted. Joyce Lambert?
My name is Derek Murphy with Quality Engineering and Surveying, representing Ms. Joyce Lambert, who is asking for a family petition to be approved tonight so she can give some properties to her children. We've addressed all comments by the Planning Commission.
No comments, recommend approval.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing. Any comments? Anyone signed up? Close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I recommend approval.
I'll second that recommendation.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted.
Thank you.
Want to, item 10?
Public hearing for, Mason, Maison?
That should be Derek also, yeah.
My name is Derek Murphy with Quality Engineering again, representing Belle Maison. We are asking for a preliminary plat approval for a 54-lot subdivision off of William Ficklin Road. We did a traffic study and a drainage study. The traffic study has been approved by the staff. We are working on a couple of comments on the drainage study, but we are certain, we're working with staff and having those drainage issues resolved as we speak.
Staff, you discuss your comments?
As far as the layout of the subdivision, it meets all the new guidelines for subdivision as far as green space and lot sizes and density and everything. Tim can tell you more about the, what they're working with, on with the drainage study, but...
Yes, we're working on with the drainage. They just turned in a new plan last week. I haven't fully reviewed it yet. From what my conversations were, I think we can work it out, but it is, is a different scenario than usually comes in, in that even though their drainage is not, they're not changing the watershed area, they are taking the drainage in a different direction than it is currently going. So, we'll want to take a close look at what, what they're proposing to do. But, we believe that as long, they're under the understanding that there may be work that needs to be done, ditches to be upgraded, culverts to be upgraded, that will have to be taken care of, and we'll look at that analysis closely.
And tonight, I'm, we're asking for approval, we're contingent upon approval of the drainage study. And let me explain, we actually have a downstream ditch that runs through this property. Downstream of here, there is a undersized culvert, and we know we're going to have to look at that and upgrade it. Of course, we're working with the engineering department, it just takes time to put all that together and, and get the comments. So, it's not going to affect the layout, it's not going to affect what we're doing. We've actually done all the calculations, it's just a matter of getting them reviewed and getting them approved.
So, you're actually going to reverse the direction of that ditch?
No, sir, we're not. What happens is, there is a lot, this, this lot, this property right now drains completely to William Ficklin Road, that really is undersized and under capacity. We're actually going to, there is a larger ditch running to the east to Black Bayou, it's the same watershed, it's, it has capacity. There is a, there is an undersized culvert that's there today. We are doing pre-equal post, the same as what the ordinance claims. We're going to fix that, that drainage issue downstream, and we're going to, we're going to allow the water to go that direction versus trying to get out to William Ficklin Road that has some drainage issues that way. We're also going to make sure that we don't block, I'll put this on the record, we're not going to block any ditch coming onto us, we're going to make sure it passes freely through our property, and we're going to keep the drainage patterns as close today as possible. Right now, we're at the, the top of the watershed. Right now, the water drains west and east off of us. We have, it goes in both directions. We're going to take more of the water that was going east, detain it, and reroute it to the west, no, to the, I'm sorry, for it to go into the west, and reroute it and get it to the east because of the drainage issues to the west. And we're going to allow free flow with the ditches. The ditches that are coming through there are very, very small. This, this property has some water on it, and we're going to make sure that we continue to drain. We do, we have a good bit of pond on this property, and we feel, all the calculations do show that we're not going to have any issues.
Do you know if, if anybody in that area has had, historically had water drainage problems?
Yes, sir. That, the corner of William Ficklin and Bro Road does go underwater at times, and that's why we're rerouting some of the water the other way, because there is a, when the subdivision came in next to us, they did some drainage improvements going that way to get to Black Bayou. They did a good job on the ditch, it's just a culvert that needs to be upgraded. The ditch has capacity, according to all of our calculations. It's all the same watershed, it's Black Bayou, it's just a different way. Instead of going down the undersized culverts along William Ficklin, having drainage issues at William Ficklin and Bro, and then trying to get to a finger of Black Bayou, it's going to go the other way and get right into Black Bayou. So...
So, the undersized culvert that you're talking about is a roadside culvert that's on William Ficklin?
No, that, this ditch that drains to the east actually goes under a road, I think it's Royal, Royal Drive, and it's a 36-inch culvert.
And you guys can do that off-site because of the parish...
It's inside the right way. It's inside, it's inside the parish right away.
Okay.
And it's not that we bring in more water there, our calculations show today, as the water sits today, out of five-year storm, that water, that road over tops.
Yeah, it's an undersized culvert.
Correct. So, we're not, it's not that we're, we're causing the problem, there is a problem, we're going to fix it.
You have to match pre to post.
Got it.
Question for staff. We've had a few proposals where it was continued on receipt of whether it's a drainage impact, environmental impact, traffic impact. How difficult would it be to have that inclusive for this process, that we know it doesn't have an impact? The report would be available?
This, they're, they changed the layout, or not the layout, but the drainage. They were originally planning on taking it in two different directions. Now, they're pretty much sending it in one direction, but they didn't have the plan until the packets had already gone out.
We did provide a drainage study, we did, we had more water going to William Ficklin. We were asked by the engineering department, who did a, did a review, look at the downstream culverts down William Ficklin. They were undersized. We matched pre-equal post, okay? There's existing drainage issues at pre, so we matched that. So, in order to not keep the situation the same, we chose to do something a little different in order, we, we went all the way down William Ficklin, looked at the culverts, saw that they were undersized, we moved it the other way. So, that's why it's not 100%, because we actually went back and we met the ordinance as we saw fit. We're trying to go a step above.
In cases like that, could we get a statement to that effect?
From staff?
From staff.
As...
Met the original requirements, whether it be traffic, impact, environmental, drainage, what have you, to know that from our purposes, our perspective, it's in compliance, we're doing better, at least a thorough explanation so we can pass a good judgment.
In the beginning, the Seminoles were targeting mutants, and they began targeting everyone. He's going to take more of us, the X-Men, side by side to end this war before it ever The future of the world begins now.
Well, don't look back.
With an additional study.
So, again, my original concern is, what would it do to the process to ensure that the appropriate impact study was provided to us?
Well, if we don't get it in time to, to make the review complete, but before it comes here, it would need to be delayed until the next meeting.
Is it that time sensitive, to have one of these studies complete?
Uh, it can be.
Yes, sir.
Now, would we have the opportunity, if, say, we would approve this preliminary plat, and we, you all weren't satisfied at the drainage, we could not approve the final, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, well, you wouldn't, there wouldn't be a matter of approving a final. They, you'd just say contingent on, if they didn't meet it, then it would not be approved.
Yeah, we still have to go through construction plans, Tim has to approve all the construction plans, engineering has to be done, construction plans have to meet, and then we come back for the final. So, contingent upon means we're working through, a lot of this is even worked out even in the construction plan phase. Even though a lot of times we have an approved drainage study, things get changed when we get into construction plan phase, because we do more, more topographic surveys, do more boundary surveys, we do, we do a lot of different analysis once we get into the construction plan phase and take it a step further, get more detail. In this case, we just happen to be doing it up front. If we, if we would have stuck with our original proposal, we might have had a, basically a approved drainage study that might have got changed during the construction plan phase. We do that a lot of times, because we're looking at engineering from a whole. A, a study is just a study. It is something that's required by ordinance, and we do look at the overall drainage areas and, and habits. But as we get into construction plans, as you may know, we actually take it to the minute detail, and at that time, things do change. So, all we're asking tonight for is the approval. There's nothing going to change as far as late lot layouts, row configurations, pond sizing and things like that. It's just a matter of getting that stamp of approval from Tim, that this study or this method of drainage will work according to the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, we've had this discussion about preliminary plats several times. We know that, that it's lacking a lot of detail, but the detail that is in here, in terms of what this commission now requires for major subdivisions, is all, is all correct. We, we know that there's a lot of kinks to be worked out, including the drainage. You said the traffic study is completed or not?
Yes, sir.
Because that shouldn't change, right? And so, the drainage studies, there's still things to work out with that, and we have time, as, as staff said, this won't get approved if it doesn't meet with their requirements. So, I know we still have to have a public meeting, a public hearing on this, and there may be people here who, who want to discuss that, so... But this is pretty, this is how we look at every preliminary plat.
Yes, and also, I mean, we will look at this closer when it comes to the construction plans. This is a, it's a preliminary study, it's, it's just an overview, but we will look at closer again at construction plans.
Yeah, remember, we've voiced some concerns, especially about drainage, because the two issues that come up that people most concerned about are traffic and drainage. And drainage is, is difficult to understand, so we kind of put a requirement on the staff to take a closer look at this, to make sure that they're, they're completely satisfied with the studies that were done. So, we made it a little tougher for staff to, to look at these and ultimately to approve them. I think they have to do a little more work, maybe more field visits and, you know, to be absolutely assured that, that this is going to work like it's supposed to.
Plus, at this point, the developer hasn't really gathered enough data to make sure whether or not this development's even feasible. I mean, that kind of comes more along, more at the time of the construction plans than the, than the preliminary plat. A lot of this stuff is taken with LiDAR data and things like that. Get the elevations and make sure that it'll, the concept will work. I feel like it's all in check.
That's what I wanted to say, is just a quick point. Ben and I met with one of the applicants from last month, we approved their preliminary plat, they had approved traffic and drainage, and they had based their entire drainage study off of a LiDAR that happened to be incorrect. Now, over half their site is dropped a foot, and they're going to be hit with the fill limitations and some other things, and so, we met with them today to talk about it. That plot, project probably won't look the same when the final plat comes, because if it still gets developed, they're going to have to re-engineer the whole thing to make it work with the new elevation. So, it really is a preliminary study, and until Tim is satisfied, they're not going to go forward to the construction plan phase with anything, because they wouldn't waste the time or the money.
And that has...
That's correct. I had one question before we go to public hearing, about the sewer treatment plant?
Yes, sir.
Is that, that's behind a lot that, that runs on William Ficklin Road. Is there a home, or is there something on that lot now?
Yes, sir, we will ensh, there's a pond in the back, and I think the house is a little further up. We will ensure that that treatment plant is 100 feet off that home as per ordinance.
Yes, you've got, you're showing it right on the, your property line.
Yes, sir. I think it is 100 feet from the structure. I'll have to double-check, I don't have an aerial right now, but...
If I lived there, I'd have some concerns about where that, boy, that's...
Well, we originally had it in the back, but because of the Parish, as you know, is getting into the, into the sewer business. They want it as far up to William, in this case, William Ficklin as possible, and that's why we put it there.
Well, that makes, that makes sense.
And so, that, that's where it is. But if we, you know, if we need to move it to, well, if you go to track BM2, you, you, next to another lot, but we'll make sure that we 100 foot off of any structures.
Have as much of a buffer as you can manage, I think.
Right, we can actually move it on BM1 a little bit further in, that's not a problem.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing. Anyone sign up? Anyone speak?
Gary Benz.
My name is Gary Benz, I live at 14390 Bro Road, I'm on the west side of this project. I'm probably the reason that they had to redo their drainage, because when it appeared on the Parish website, we saw some concerns with the way the ponds were going to drain. I've lived there since 1985, and I see William Ficklin, Bro Road, Tommy Moore go under four times a year. Bro Road ditches get up to the top banks at least eight times a year. When Bro Road ditches get up to the top banks, it will then flow back toward Black Bayou instead of flowing down toward the Calbots. So, what they've agreed to do is, I remember when Windscape was brought about, all the issues with Windscape created a court battle and also extra capacity for the ditch going back to Black Bayou. So, that was a more palatable way to deal with the drainage, to keep it off Bro, keep it off Ficklin, keep it off Tommy Moore. It would keep it from sheet flowing across my property and across my neighbor's property, trying to go to Bro where it can't go. I'm not here to speak against the project. If they do what they say they're going to do in dealing with the drainage, I'm, I'm okay with it. I understand it can't stay pasture forever, and I don't have an issue, but I do have a concern about drainage, and I think it needs to absolutely be looked at, and my approval would be based on an approved study that gets the water out toward Black Bayou. Thank you.
Any other comments?
My name is Daniel Goutro, I live at 14452 Bro. My concern would be, we've got a private drive, a private road that the Parish or nobody else is maintaining but us.
And speaking of the microphone, please, so you'll, you'll be picked up on the television.
I live at 14452 Bro Road, Daniel Goutro, have a private road that we maintain, a couple of neighbors, we've got several seven-acre plots that we're all on, and we all maintain this street. And if this subdivision comes in, we'd just like to make sure that they're not going to tear our road up that we maintaining. It's, it's on the back corner off of Bro, and it goes all the way through to, I guess, the, the old Ben West's place, which I'm, I've heard is part of this subdivision.
That's LP Goutro Road?
LP Goutro Road, that's the...
See, it's on, it's on the draw.
It's a private, it's been a private road up there, we've been maintaining it, so if they plan on using the road and everything...
I don't, I don't think that they really could, could they? I mean...
And I also like to say, the water does need to drain away from Bro Road, I agree with my neighbor. When they tried, they tried to force it toward, away from the black, when they first did the ditch, the ditch on the Bro Road end is gigantic, and as you go toward the black, it gets smaller and smaller and smaller.
It is a big ditch, yeah.
And the water would drain toward the black if that ditch would be opened up. And the water do, would drain toward the black if that ditch would be opened up.
Yeah, looking at the drainage impact study, I mean, it looks like they've done, you know, they, they're trying to route it.
Cool.
East like that, and it looks, it sounds like you, you know, they're addressing everyone's concerns.
Right.
They found the concerns themselves.
Okay.
It does look that there's any connection to, um, LP Goutro, uh, Road either.
I don't know if they can put it up on the.
Lots back up onto the road.
Right.
Also.
Very good.
I'd like to hear his comments about, and make sure he doesn't use the road.
We'll actually add a, a note on the preliminary plat saying that lots forty-four through forty-eight will not, uh, connect to LP Goutro Road.
Okay.
So that's, that's not an issue at all.
Will there be, will there be a fence or something like that? Maybe you could require the lot owners to put up a fence?
That would be part of the restrictions, um. But we can make sure that they don't have a connection, which means that there's no house.
Okay.
When you get into, uh, uh, get into building, that they will be allowed a driveway that way, for sure.
Yeah, I think the parish would stop them, they wouldn't give them a permit for that.
Okay.
Being a private road.
There was a gentleman in the back, if you recognize comments?
Name's Jeremy Ruiz, I live on four zero zero five eight William Finklin Road. And the way that they have the gas, the way they have the gas pipeline, my yard is the main drain for that new subdivision they're going to put in. If all that water runs, it hits that gas pipeline, and all they can do is come to my yard. I stay underwater every time it rains. Is the water going, they're going to get the water go out faster? Or it's just going to sit there and, and stay in my yard the whole time?
You want to respond to that?
Yeah, I'm looking for that too.
The address is on Bro Road?
William Finklin.
William Finklin.
Must, must be way out here, huh? If it, if it's in line with the pipeline.
That's the gas pipeline, right there, I'm right here. Where's the, where's the road there? That's what, that's where. Over here?
Right now, all of our property, or a good portion of our property drains directly onto this, this gentleman. That's one reason we're trying to get it away from him, so, he's, uh, he's to the west of us.
Yeah, I mean, my, I'm, I'm telling you, I float, I, I put a boat in when, when it rains all the time.
I don't doubt that.
I, I kind of let it get there.
Well, I, I can tell you, I can tell you that, that our lot drains in that direction, and we're trying to route it the other way where we can get directly into Black Bayou, that's what we're trying to do.
Any further comments?
My name is, uh, Patrick Malonsal Junior, I live at one four four seven two Bro Road, which is on LP Goutro Road, is, I live on the end of it. Uh, my dad runs cattle on the place adjacent to the property. Uh, we maintain all the fencing and everything through there. I just want to make sure when they come in there to do any clearing or anything that they don't, you know, tear our fences down, and, and we have cattle out on the, on the highway. You know, we don't, we don't need that. We, uh, there's a lot of clearing, I know there's going to need to be done in the woods there. But we just want to make sure that, you know, our fences stay intact, so we ain't out chasing cows in the middle of the night.
Is your fence right on the border of this property for the subdivision?
Yes, sir.
It is, okay.
Yes, sir.
Where's, is your access, uh, only going to be for construction, only going to be off of, um, William Finklin Road? So everything's got to go in and out of there, you're not accessing your property for construction from any other.
I think he's worried about.
Your fence is right across.
Yeah, I get that.
The fence, no, the fence runs right down the side of, uh.
It looks like Lot Five on there, if you look at it.
Yeah, it would be the west, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, the west side of the property.
Yeah.
That they proposing, and then it would run down towards the east side of the property at the very end of it, down, down the side of, uh, LP Goutro Road.
I mean, they're required to submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan, where they kind of, they have to make sure that they can keep all of their dirt on their lot, and they, they can't really exceed their property at all.
Yeah, and I understand that.
If that happens, I would imagine it would be a mistake, and you run screaming to these guys. You let them know and get something done immediately.
Yeah.
Might want to get his phone number, so if you're chasing cattle, you call him. He'd be out there with you.
You know, we've been raising cows and horses there all our lives, we've been there, I've been there my whole life. We just want to make sure when they come in there to do their cleaning, and I know how it gets out of hand, you know, they'll start knocking trees down, next thing you know, the fence is down, and we got issues.
Right. Derek, you making a note of that?
Yeah.
Maybe even flag the fence and.
All right.
Some warning.
Yes, sir.
Any further, other comments? At this time, we close the floor, other comments, can a motion?
A regular approval, contingent on the drainage impact study, comments being, uh, addressed satisfactorily.
I'll second please.
I'll second that. I'm sorry, Josh, did you?
I thought there was another contingency that Derek had brought up with the, um, what was it, was it the treatment plant?
Was the move, make sure the treatment plant's a hundred foot from any structure.
I suggested that we have more of a buffer between the private property and the treatment.
There was another contingency.
And then no, no access from LP Goutro Road from forty-five to forty-seven.
Yeah, he said he was going to put that on a preliminary plat.
Okay, so let's do that, let's make the motion contingent upon the impact study comment, drainage impact study comments being addressed, uh, that there being increased buffer between the private, other private property and the treatment plant, and, uh, no access from, uh.
LP Goutro.
LP Goutro Road, and what else, Ricky?
I would like to suggest that as we continue to work through the construction drawing phase of this, that Derek submit to us a drawing so we can understand how that gated entry works. Because you have to have the ability to get out without going through the gate, and the way it currently looks, because we're just looking at right-of-way lines, it doesn't look like there's enough room. And so just as part of this process, to ensure that there's some ability to make a U-turn to get out of that subdivision if you can't get into the gate.
So do we need to make?
No, I'm just, that's just a comment that I just want to make sure that we're.
Good comment.
On the same page.
So your motion, yeah, motion's good.
And I'll second that motion.
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can be Germany Oaks?
You're a busy guy tonight, aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
My name is Derek Murphy, with Quality Engineering, representing, uh, Germany Oaks, Kelly C. Seals LLC. Uh, asking tonight for your approval for a hundred lots. On, uh, Germany Road, we have a traffic study and, and traffic study, uh, traffic and drainage study, both, uh, approved. And we do realize that we have a turn lane in the traffic study, and we understand that. So we're asking tonight, uh, we have met all comments from the staff, and we're asking tonight for your approval.
So the drainage impact study comments have been satisfactorily addressed?
Uh, yes, the drainage impact study has been addressed, the traffic study, I believe they've been addressed, they just came in today, so I haven't had a chance to review them yet.
Okay. So we'll still need a.
Were there any unusual drainage issues brought up by the study? I mean, anything that would cause us any concern?
Actually, I, that, that was a pretty straightforward, uh.
Okay.
Drainage.
So you're going to have to put a turn lane in on Germany Road?
Yes, sir.
You agree to that?
Yes.
Your comments?
I mean, it was a, uh, it was, I think, at fifty-six lots, it required a turn lane, so, I mean, there was, there was no borderline, we had to put it in, we understand there's a forty-foot right-of-way, uh, so that would be handled during the construction plans and make sure that we can fit it within the forty-foot right-of-way, pipe in the ditches or whatever we need to do. We might have to give property on our side, we understand all that, I mean, it's just, it's just.
Tight.
Part of it.
Open the floor for public notice, public hearing, any comments?
Um, Betty Bursa Jay.
Betty Bursa Jay, and I live at three nine one six four Germany Road, just a short distance from where the property is being developed. I'm here, uh, concerned about the drainage. There was a ditch going all the way through that property, and when they cleaned the property off, they left the ditch open for about a hundred feet and sealed it off the rest of the way. Now it's that way.
Is that directly behind your property?
No ma'am, no, the other subdivision that they fixing to put up joins me in the back, this is further down the road from me. There's no drainage going through that property now, and it, the road drains through there going to a big canal in the back part of that property.
Miss Bursa Jay, that's, is that, um, problem affecting your property right now?
No, but it affects the road, the drainage doesn't run off.
So the, the area, where's our consultant, the area's been cleared?
Yeah, there was trees, and they only left one tree, there's no trees left at all. I don't know where they got the name Oaks, because there's no Oaks.
They left one.
I guess they're going to plant.
And where they got the name Germany, there's never been a Germany that lives on that road, it's all been Goutros and Bursa Jays.
Yeah, my subdivision's, uh, Oak Alley Estates, and, and until we planted little oak trees in front of every house, there weren't any oak trees there either, so.
And I have no idea what is being developed there.
That's a hundred.
Well, uh, right now, can you tell us, the property's cleared right now, I wasn't able to go out and look.
Part of it is.
It is, it's totally clear.
Because you can't, you don't want, I mean, during preliminary stages, you don't want to obviously impact the drainage that's currently happening on the property, right?
Fourteen, this is a thirty-four acre development, it's two pieces, it's several pieces of property, uh, that make up fourteen acres, and there's a twenty acre piece, uh.
That joins it, that joins me in the back.
Okay, the, the piece of pride, the fourteen acres was cleared earlier this year, I believe, prior to my client purchasing the property. Uh, there is, the ditch is still going through, I do have topo on that, through a ditch. I don't, I do not know what the ditch was during clearing, but it is still there today.
It was a big ditch.
Yes, um, all I know is, right now, there is still a ditch there, and we're going to actually enhance, uh, well, we're not going to necessarily enhance it, but we are passing that ditch through us, we're not clogging it up in any way, shape or form. We are going, uh, behind lots one hundred through ninety-eight and moving a ditch around, that's what we have on our drainage study. And, uh, there's a ditch that comes through and goes to the big canal in the development behind us.
It only goes part of the way, and then it stops, they closed it up.
Derek, is that ditch drained to the, the back of the property, or does it drain away from Germany?
It drains away from Germany.
It does drain away from Germany?
Yeah, it goes to the canal in the back.
And I'd say the ditch is about a hundred feet through there, and then it's closed up.
Okay.
How far further back is the canal?
It, it's actually, it is, it's, it actually goes, uh, there's a subdivision behind us, and the canal running through that subdivision.
It comes to Country Ridge back there.
Oh, I see it, on an aerial.
So, uh, we actually have a servitude, a ditch leaving us where, right where our pond is, so the ditch actually goes, can, has an outfall which is a, sort of a canal.
You are outfalling in that canal, that's the, that's your end result?
Yes.
And the property, that twenty acres that joins me in the back, there's a big ditch of drainage back there too.
Yes, ma'am, there is.
And I want to make sure that that stays open, because that's where my water drains, in the back part of my property.
We are accepting that water, yes.
I mean, looking at it, almost doesn't look like y'all are affecting the watershed.
Not really.
The way the water's flowing across the land much, I mean, y'all are detaining what's on your property, but not really.
And that twenty acres does have some wetlands back there.
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Just off of mine.
It does.
So we did have a wetland determination, and we are mitigating that wetland south, we are in the process of working with the four of engineers.
Okay.
Any further public comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Brooks.
I live at three nine two nine nine Country Drive in Country Ridge, and the property that he's speaking of is clear cut all the way back to the canal. There's no drainage coming off of his lots to that canal. It's higher now than what it was. From our neighborhood back to his property, it's elevated. They have a natural drainage across the property behind me that hadn't been cleaned out in twenty years. Runs from Bro Road behind my property to that canal. And all that water backs up from the end of Country Drive all the way back up to, uh, Sweet Pecan. It even comes in on my property. So any kind of flow restrictions of water, I mean, we were getting water from Germany and Bro Road comes through there. And the ditches can't handle it. And adding another, and going to drain sewer or off his pond into, adding to our problems back there is, I can't see it. Then they were speaking to people that are behind it, they want access from what I was told into our neighborhood so they can get out of that neighborhood. And we've already got Palmetta, which is a new Rogers, tied into our neighborhood, and there's traffic just galore. I mean, people say, it's, it's one of nobody's been killed in there, because they do fly through there. Commercial vehicles, you name it, it comes through. But, I mean, assuming they bought it from Mr. LeBlanc, that was his property that lives next door to it.
Well, there's only, there's only one in and out of this subdivision that's on Germany Road, there's, there's no other connections anywhere else.
Well, I was told by some people, they got letters, certified letters to come up here that join the back end of that property, and they were discussing with them about making an exit out of that neighborhood in the hours.
Well, any comments on that?
If this preliminary plat gets approved with this one entrance, I don't, I don't believe that can change.
There, there, there is a, a private servitude that touches our property, it's, it's not for, it's in the back off that subdivision, we are not connecting to it at all, it's actually got some utilities in it that touches our property, uh, some drainage ditches and things like that that touches the property. We had looked at that at one time as a secondary connection out, because it is a servitude, we're not utilizing that at all. Uh, we are keeping our servitude, uh, our access strictly off of Germany.
Yeah.
But have y'all been down Ger- have y'all been down Germany Road at five o'clock?
I live down there, so, yeah, every day.
When I first moved there, all I heard was cows.
Uh, can imagine, the good old days.
Now, you don't, you don't even want to go near Germany.
Yeah.
From three to five or three to seven.
And it is concerning, and, and.
And that's another, how many houses?
Hundred.
Hundred lots.
So another two, three hundred people.
I mean, luckily, they are required to put a turn lane in, so it'd be a left, coming off airline, they would have to put a left turn lane in to turn into their neighborhood, and that alone would be a, a huge help, I mean, that is a requirement for this preliminary plat to get approved. And the fact that the preliminary plat only has one entrance and exit today is the end of that, it squashes it, they, they, they would not be allowed to do another entrance on the back.
Well, on their sewer system, how, what are they doing there, are they going to have their own?
It will, it'll have a treatment plant, treatment facility that's located towards the front, have you got to see the preliminary plat?
Right next to ninety-eight, ninety-eight.
I don't know if maybe Derek could show you or put it up on the projector maybe, but, um.
It's similar to the one we talked about earlier, that the parish wants it as close to.
It looks like the same scenario, yeah, it sure does.
Road as you can.
Interesting.
You're, you're up.
Yeah, I can't even see it on.
You show them that fifty by fifty?
Where's your?
Or sixty by sixty?
All right, this is Country Ridge back here?
Country Ridge back here.
Back here.
Yes, sir, so you see that one exit, one entrance and exit on the front of the neighborhood?
So this is going to the west, yeah. Yeah, because if it, if all this property, this, you said this is Country Ridge?
Yes.
If all that land goes up higher than us, then we're going to receive a lot more water.
Well, this actually drains that way now.
Yeah, it's going to be, make it even worse, because y'all are going to get higher and it's going to run faster.
That's why we put that towards the detention point.
Yeah, they have to detain it and not release the water any quicker than it's being released now, and that's a guarantee. It i- it is, I know you laugh, but it, it, I mean, they have to.
Well, I mean, I paid forty-two and a quarter. Well, I mean, I pay 42 and 1/4 a month to flush a toilet. Now, I think that's kind of ridiculous there, too.
There's a drainage servitude behind all those lots along, where you're talking about?
There's just one that comes, the water from Germany usually backs up all the way to Palmetta. You know, because the canal can't handle it.
Yeah.
And just like that ditch behind me that goes across, I don't know the guy's name, but it's a 20-acre tract right there. It had, y'all cleaned it out 20 years ago. So that water pushes it back, and it makes the water go different directions. Usually, the water's supposed to go that way and then cut back to that canal. But it'll go all over now.
Tim, when you look at drainage studies that say, we're not gonna make it any worse than what it was, in Ms. Bursa-Jay's point, do you look at what was there a year ago? Are you looking at what was there today? So that if a ditch was closed, you're just looking at the ditch is closed today? Or do you have something that shows what it was six months ago or a year ago?
Well, I've walked through there.
No, we pretty much just look at... We look at what's there today.
To that property they cleared off, they had a ditch. They kind of caddywampus through there back toward that canal.
That's what Ms. Bursa-Jay said.
And I've been across that property quite a bit chasing cows. And it's not there anymore.
Could I speak again?
Can you? It's Bursa-Jay, she wants to speak again.
How many more people do you have?
Any other, any other further?
I'd like to speak.
My name is James Giddering. I live in Country Ridge subdivision, own two lots in Country Ridge subdivision. One on Country Drive, one on Silver Oak. Silver Oak, the street is the gravel road part. It floods over every time it rains. And that piece of property, like that guy said, is higher than what it was before they cleared it. And I can't understand how in the world it got higher. And plus, they draining the water from Germany Road towards us? We gonna flood like hell. One of the parish man told me five years ago, on Silver Oak Drive, they were supposed to take that curb out and put a box in it. They ain't did that yet. Every time it rain, it blocks, stop up, and it don't drain. And that property is much higher than what it was.
Has that, some of that property's been cleared. Has there been any fill placed on that property since it's been cleared?
It's only been cleared.
So it's already pretty high. It's high, it's high property.
It's about 16 inches high in the property that people own.
So you're thinking that after it was cleared, fill was put on the property?
I don't know if, what happened.
Or maybe just dirt pushed around, possibly, on this piece of property? I mean, I've kind of observed it myself. I mean, I drive that road. I drive past that probably six times a day, as much as I go back and forth to the store. And I mean, I've kind of watched it. I mean, I personally haven't noticed any fill. I mean, I'm not trying to...
Well, I don't know about...
Anything trucked in.
What part of close to Germany Road.
Right, well, yeah, and you're right, I pay attention to the back.
Of course, them houses that people own in Country Drive, it's much higher. It's at least 16 inches higher.
Maybe it's just been pushed around? I mean, instead of additional fill trucked in?
I don't know. It show, look like it's higher all the way through from the back. Now, towards Germany Road, it don't look as bad. If you take a ride in Country Ridge, in Country Drive, you can see it's much higher.
Derek, the contours that you're showing on this drainage impact study, those contours are the contours from before the property was ever cleared and messed with at all, from what I'm seeing and understanding, right?
Yeah, that's LIDAR.
That's showing the, right, that's showing the drainage patterns from what the LIDAR data reflects, not from what's cleared now.
That's correct.
So it is a little bit different what they're seeing versus what the drainage impact study shows.
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, again, this property was cleared before my client bought it. He was told there was no fill brought in. It was just cleared. And so that's all we can go by, was not involved in the project at that time.
Right, right.
I mean, they would almost have to topo it to determine whether fill was brought in, and that's a big investment upfront.
Well, the other problem...
You haven't seen it. You've passed through a lot.
Good bit.
Property looks a lot different after it's been cleared. Might have, you know, it sounds like it was that high. You just can't tell until the property's cleared, and you can kind of see the contour of the land.
I mean, they dug root balls, yeah.
The issue for us is, nothing in your project has raised elevation. Is that correct?
Yeah, build houses on it.
Any further public comments?
One thing...
Gentlemen in the back. Gentlemen in the back, please.
Yes, sir, they, they need to allow about three minutes.
The gentleman back there, please.
Kent Morrow, own the property 39039 on Degel Road. This project is gonna back up to some commercial property that I have. A concern that I'm having here is, once these trees are cleared out behind my property and these lots are put, how much, how much, what type of recourse would they have when they hear banging and beating and trucks running and commercial businesses taking place here? I'm concerned it's not a buffer that maybe will help eliminate problems in the future.
You have a business on the property now?
That is correct.
What type of business?
I have actually three different businesses there now. I own the land, so I don't own the business, so I'm a landlord. So the business can change tomorrow. Actually, right now, it's a good business that's there, because it's the CCAN, these containers. So they stack them three high. So it's a great buffer today. But what happens tomorrow? When maybe they're not there, and it's some type of the industry that's maybe making noise while someone's sleeping during the daytime?
Is your property zoned residential, and his grandfather did?
I'm zoned commercial.
Is zoned commercial.
That is correct. But I'm just trying to head off any potential problems in the future that, you know, we could possibly deal with now, that we can't deal with then.
Well, where, with respect to this property, where is it? Your property? With respect to this...
See where it makes that big?
He's own lots 30 and 37.
Well, with respect to, you know, you've got an established business, your business, people who, let the buyer beware, as far as the subdivision's concerned.
Right.
When I, I bought a house in Kenner, I don't know how long it's been now, 35 years ago. I promise you, not a plane flew over that house when we looked at that house a dozen times. And we no sooner moved in and discovered we were on the flight path, you know, the north-south runway. But people are gonna see, there's a business there. They're gonna look at those lots. Either the developer has to make it worthwhile for them to understand there's this commercial behind their lots, or they're not gonna buy it.
And I understand that. But I do understand that when the lots sell, and they will sell, maybe they put them on fire sale, and they sell them to someone for half price.
You think you're gonna get complaints from the residents?
Okay, there's gonna be problems. I'm just wanting to know what can we do today to prevent that? That's all I want to do. Now, see, there's a detention pond. Can a detention pond be put in that area instead of lots? You know, can we do something different than just clearing out all the natural trees that are there now so we don't have a problem five or 10 years down the road, or three years down the road, that we can't do anything about, because it's too late? I just want to head off something here, that's all I'm trying to do.
You make a good point.
And the way I look at it, it's kind of like, like you say, it's buyer beware, it's free enterprise. I mean, if they want to put the ponds back...
That, that, that sounds great, and that sounds good. But we all know, when these seven, eight lots are sold, people are gonna start complaining 24/7. Let's, let's be real.
I just don't see a mechanism that we, as a planning commission, have in place to where we could force a property owner to lay out their property a certain way.
Well, let's not force anybody anything. I mean, you got to do certain things on this property, correct? You have to have detention ponds. Why can't we not move a detention pond? Let's make some type of buffer here.
Because it's up to them if they want to move that detention pond, I guess. And they may not want to. They may want to take a chance and not be able to sell those back lots. They may have a hard time selling.
But I thought that's the reason why we're here, is to head off potential problems.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
You know, I'm only here to try and head off a problem. I'm not trying to stop the development. Look, I'm all game for it, this is good.
You know, the developer wants to sell all the lots, certainly.
Correct.
If the developer believes that that's gonna be a potential problem to sell the lots, he could reconfigure this somehow. I can't suggest how, but...
But he can knock them 40% off to sell these lots. Look, I've developed this subdivision before. I'm all with, I'm for them.
Is your lot cleared, your property cleared all the way to the property line?
It is cleared 100%, that's correct. Now, I'm just concerned if we don't have some type of buffer or something now, there's gonna be a problem.
Can you split the buffer with them?
Meaning?
Put half the buffer on your property, and they can put the other half on theirs? Like you had mentioned, 50 foot is an arbitrary number to put out there, so.
Or a wall?
Those lots are 150 feet deep.
Instead of requiring them, or, you know, asking a favor of them to... I still don't know that we could require the developer to not clear his land as he sees fit. I don't think that we can put that on them.
Okay, so you're gonna guarantee me that soon as somebody buys these lots?
No.
I don't have to hear BS 24/7? Is that what you're telling me?
We'll never be able to guarantee you that.
Well, then let's maybe head off a problem. Let's use a little common sense and work the program.
Staff, do you see this as an issue? Staff, do you see this as an issue?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
It's definitely an issue, but the way our code is written, they are the less intense use. So we don't require a buffer, we don't require a fence, we don't do anything. I spoke to Mr. Morrow earlier, and, you know, when I threw out a number, it wasn't enough. He was thinking double or triple what the number I threw out was. And, once again, our code does not require that. He is trying to head off a problem. Is there a way to change the drainage? That's a question for the engineer. Does that make water go uphill? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not looking at the site in that way. But yes, in five years, we will be taking complaints from those homeowners because of the noise on that property. It just, it's a fact.
Do we have some alternatives that are used in other cities? I mean, we've got everything from interstates to...
Those alternatives are always the burden of the noise producer.
Yes.
Except in this case, the noise producer...
Been there forever.
Exists, yes.
So it's, it comes to the buyer beware. He's trying to head that off, and our code doesn't support that. It just, it's the same thing with bringing in a church next to a bar. You know, the code says a bar can't go next to a church. Why does the code not say that a church can't go in? It just doesn't.
We have no enforcing mechanism in place to pin on the developer of this property. He's adhering to the code as it is right now with the preliminary plat.
Correct. He doesn't have to build a fence between residential and residential. He doesn't have to build a fence between residential and commercial. He is the less intense use.
Have you had any communication between yourself and developer?
I have not, no, no. And I guess I take responsibility for that, because this is the first that I see the plot here. But I'm more than happy to be able to sit down with someone and try to work something out here. I mean, it's, I think if we use a little common sense, we can make something happen to head off a problem in the future.
Would it be amenable to have discussions?
Yeah. I think that's a, that's a good idea.
I can't speak for the developer on this, but definitely if I was a developer, and it's issues, one of the issues I have is that there is an existing ditch back there. And I'm looking at the ditch, my drainage study's actually on Mr. Morrow's property a little bit. I think we have to improve that ditch. And that was one of the issues I'd had. Maybe we can improve the ditch on Mr. Morrow's property versus ours, and we can leave a buffer, or something like that. That was the only reason I was gonna get into that right at the property line. So I need, that's definitely, I think the ditch is on your property.
Can you tell me how the water's gonna flow here?
How the water's gonna flow?
Yes.
Everything's gonna flow to this pond and go into this larger ditch.
So right now, the landscape goes in this direction?
It goes that direction, yes.
There are serious drainage issues in that whole area. I mean, I see it, when we have a flash flood, it's really bad. I mean, I watch the ditches stay very high at all times. I'm more concerned about if, what can we do today to prevent something for tomorrow?
You make a very good point. I think if you guys can, can at least look at this work together and see what the possibilities are. As Ricky suggested, we're kind of limited as to what we could require, because he's meeting all our requirements now. In fact, this, this new subdivision layout is brand new as of this year, as you know. The requirements for sidewalks and trees and green space and everything else. You know, we're happy to see that sort of thing. But, yeah, this is something we haven't addressed yet. And we agree, I think we all agree, it's gonna be a problem in the future.
So what happens in the future? These seven lots complain 24/7. Is there any type of recourse that they have?
Not if they, not, you know, not if they buy the lot.
As I, as I understand it, our noise ordinance was declared unconstitutional. And so there is no noise ordinance, as I understand it, on the books today. So the complaint would be between property owners and the nuisance that's being created. And I would probably establish that if he could establish that he's been there longer than the guy making the complaint, it's a, I've been here. His property is properly zoned. He's not an existing non-conforming. He's doing what he's allowed to do on a piece of property, and he's been doing it for...
20 years.
20 years.
It's back to the buyer beware.
It's back to, how heavily discounted does that developer need to sell those lots to sell them backed up to what they're gonna see across their backyard?
Which doesn't guarantee they're not gonna come.
But even then, you'll get the calls. That's the problem. No matter what they paid for the lot.
That's right.
You'll still get the calls.
That's right. That's...
So we're searching for a solution here.
I'm wide open.
I know.
I'm wide open.
You need to work with the developer. I think we're limited. I think you make a good point, that the developer should understand is gonna help, help their situation also. So possibly something can be worked out. I could see, I could see, for instance, just as an example, if you lost lots 28 and 39, you pulled the roads back, you left a greater, you'd have to give up two lots. Developer hates to do that, right? You pull, you pull the road back toward the, toward the east, and you leave a greater buffer in the back of those lots. In other words, you, you know what I'm saying? You see what I'm saying?
I'm with you, Mr. ...
There are solutions, but it's gonna cost somebody something to do it, you know?
Correct. I mean, when I look at lots 77 and 76.
Right.
If that, that road there was pushed back, those two lots were eliminated, you at least, and I don't have my glasses, it looks like a 40-foot lot.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, then that would create a 40-foot buffer. What I'm saying is if these two lots were, if the wall, road went here, you could then gain forty foot back here, correct?
You lose four lots.
That's correct. Not two, it'd be four.
You lose four, you're right.
And I, and I understand he doesn't want to lose four lots. Listen, I, I get that. Once again, and I don't mean to sound like a broken record here, I'm just trying to see what we can do not to have a problem down the road. And I'm here in front of you guys again saying, hey, what now?
Yes, sir.
Work with the developer, because you've got, as he pointed out, you've got something he wants, which is the ditch. And maybe there's a quid pro quo.
So, right now, you have to use this ditch, or this, is that your main plans? Is to use the ditch that, that runs right through here?
Well, that, some of this property flows into that ditch. We were gonna turtle back and allow the back end of these ditches, these lots, to go into that ditch. As far as how much, do we need to do improvements or anything without doing the final topo, I don't know exactly. So, that's, that's gonna be a possibility. And so, that's the only thing I had with those lots is being, you know, you'll have to get in there and improve that ditch. And if so, we would have to clear it to improve it. If not, then we probably could leave some kind of...
Look, Jackie, we need to move this along and let these guys work this out outside the meeting.
Folks, can we assume that you guys are gonna work on this?
Yes.
At this point, are there any further public comments? Any further public comments?
Larry Bursa-Jay. I don't live on Germany Road, but another contributing factor is off the airline. Adler Tank and Storage. The ditch that comes by Mama's property. Where it goes under Adler's property has covered it all the way across their property. So, that's a hindrance right there as far as the drainage. So, that probably needs to be looked at also.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tim, I wanna go back to an earlier comment about the ditch that used to be there that got cut off. Could we go out as a drainage organization and look at the property to make sure that, even though it's... It is the way it is today, because that's the way they bought it, that maybe the previous owner did something that changed drainage? And if there was a ditch that used to go two hundred yards and now is only going a hundred feet, maybe we ought to look at it to see if that ditch shouldn't be opened.
Yes, yeah, that'll, yeah, we should look at that. I'll have, I'll talk to the drainage department. There's drainage, they, they take care of the drainage ditches and all going, and I'll just, I'll talk to them about it.
Just, just to be, make sure we're all on the same page. In our drainage study, we considered that ditch there, which means we didn't try to block it off in our drainage study. We left an open ditch as it flows today.
But flows today is the way you bought it, not the way it was before the previous owner?
Then, we considered this ditch being open.
To where?
All the way through.
All the way through, okay.
So, we're adhering to the general drainage patterns that have been historic. If it's not there today, which I can't say if it is or isn't, I, I have a, I have a ditch with topo. We did some limited topo in this area, so I'm not gonna say it's not there. I'm not gonna say it's the same size as it was before, because I don't have historic data. But the general, we considered this ditch in the overall general scope, scheme of the drainage patterns. And we adhere to that.
I still ask that, Tim, you go ask the drainage folks to go look.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Any further public comments? That being said, we close the floor on the comments. Can I get a motion?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move for approval, but I see that there's some contingencies that we need to make. And I understand that the Drainage Impact Study has been satisfied, has already been satisfactorily addressed.
Yes.
Not needed in our contingency. And they've agreed to the eastbound left turn lane. So, I'm gonna move for approval without a contingency.
Well, the drainage, the traffic study, they haven't addressed, well, they probably have addressed them, but I haven't reviewed them to make...
So, we do need to still keep the Drainage Impact Study as part of the contingency?
The traffic, the traffic study.
Oh, the traffic.
Josh, I think it's still contingent on both those things.
Drainage and traffic?
And I have no problem putting that fail-safe in place.
Yeah, because I'd like, I'd really like to make sure that we look at that ditch that Ms. Bursa-Jay brought up, just in case something is artificial there that wasn't there before, just to make sure that that drainage piece get...
Wanting to keep us comfortable, then I, then I'm gonna move for approval, and I'll, I'll leave the contingency on, upon the Drainage Impact Study and Traffic Impact Study being satisfactorily addressed.
You have a second?
Yeah, I'll second. One of us. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted.
Thank you.
Eleven A, public hearing, East Creek Shadows.
Good evening. David Patterson, representing Land Source and Germany Land Development. We're here tonight asking approval of a final plat for East Creek Shadows. We've addressed all, one of the planning commission comments. As you'll note on the final plat, there's a fifteen-foot drainage servitude that runs down the middle of the road, Tanya Drive. And it was actually, the drainage servitude was dedicated in two thousand twelve. You'll see it under the reference maps. It's Reference Map A. That drainage servitude was dedicated on that resub map that we prepared. And there's never, it's not being used for drainage right now. There's no subsurface drainage. There's no ditch. We wanted approval of the plat with the note on it that it was to be revoked, but the planning commission's asked us to go ahead and have it revoked. And as I understand it, given the circumstances, it's administrative and a pretty minor issue. So, we would like approval of the final plat with the contingency that that drainage revocation is approved.
Thank you.
Staff?
He is correct that it is more or less administrative, but the, the, the comment from us went to them in February. It hasn't been addressed, and so, our comment was the final plat will not be signed until it's revoked. Because we don't want to be caught in a position where we've got lots out there or a street with a drainage servitude running right down the middle. And so, our condition was the plat will not be signed. So, if they get a letter from Drainage saying that they're okay with the revocation, it will skip this body, go straight to the council, and in two council meetings, that will be done. If the Drainage Board objects, or the Drainage Engineer objects, it will come to this board for approval and then go to the council for two meetings. They also have a utility servitude along the backside of a bunch of lots. It really isn't an impact, because it really is gonna fall within the rear lot setback of those lots. But it is an encumbrance on those lots. There's no utilities located in them. So, we've suggested or recommended that they remove or revoke that servitude as well. And I believe they're going through the process of getting the letters from the utility companies of no objection as well.
Should all these letter, letters of no objection be delivered already by this point, by the time it comes to us? In an ideal situation, I guess? Seems like most of the time, all that stuff's in order and...
So, they're not requesting the revocation at this meeting?
And that's the only place the letters of no objection would come into play?
Correct.
Is with the revocation.
Correct.
I got you. So, we would be issuing that as a contingency?
When this plat is signed by the chairman of the commission, the drainage servitude will no longer exist as it exists today. So, it says on here drainage servitude to be revoked. When it's signed, that servitude will no longer exist. Or it will exist in a different configuration.
And it will not be signed until after it goes to the council? If the Drainage has no objections, it goes, that's, that's the point it gets signed.
Yes, sir.
Not tonight. Okay.
We approve it.
The staff have had a recommendation about the twelve-month warning?
Correct. We were notified during construction that under one of the ends of the T-turnaround, a PVC pipe as opposed to a reinforced concrete pipe was put within the right-of-way. And rather than extending the maintenance bond for two years, the developer has agreed to do a personal guarantee that for an additional twelve months after the maintenance bond has expired, that they're gonna guarantee that that will not fail. And we really don't have a problem with it, because at the end of a T-turnaround, you're not gonna have a lot of traffic, not a lot of trips, not a lot of heavy trucks. So, we're okay with that. And that's part of your package. If you look, you can see the letter.
Yes.
It's time to open the floor for pub, public hearing, public comments. No cards? Need a motion? Close, we close for public hearing? I need a motion?
I move for approval based on the staff recommendations being met.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted. Keystone of Galvez.
Good evening again.
Hello, Mr. Murphy.
My name is Derek Murphy, representing Quality Engineering and Surveying and Keystone of Galvez LLC. Come before you tonight for the final plat approval for Keystone of Galvez Fourth and Fifth Filing. We have addressed all the comments. The punch list items were very minor. The only item still remaining on the punch list is a, from my understanding, is a hydromolching of the, some of the slopes, and that's due to the inclement weather. This week, we didn't want to put hydromolch on it, didn't want it, you know, drain off the slopes. So, that is the only thing remaining. All other punch list items have been addressed.
Staff comments?
And we assume this is not a family partition?
One hundred and thirty lot.
Keystone family?
Big family.
Staff comments?
Yeah, so, just, just to be clear, I mean, Mr. Murphy is, is correct that the majority of the punch list items do pertain to the stabilization of, of some of the banks and areas that would need some final, final grading and hydromolch. There, there actually was a little bit of trash and debris. There was a punch list item haul off trash and debris. There's a little bit of debris that's still remaining on the site that, that I would like to, to add to that. But, other than, than those items, that, that's all that's remaining. These are, are very minor in the scheme of punch list items. And so, I just wanted to, I guess, correct the, for the record, that there was more than just hydromolch, but...
Sorry about that.
But that, that being said, it, it's, it's nothing that couldn't be cleared up after the weather dries out a little bit.
This time we open the floor for public comments. No comments? Close the floor for public comments. Can I get a motion?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Give me a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So noted. Eleven C, Bullion Crossing.
I'm here tonight representing Bullion Development LLC.
We don't have to see you next month, do we?
There's no way you have it.
I don't know yet. Representing Bullion Crossing LLC, Bullion, on the third phase. Not gonna speak this time, because we had a very minor punch list. I'm not sure what's left.
So, so the punch list items in this one consist mostly of some, some pavement issues that we had. We had a couple of pavement aesthetic issues due to some damage that was done during the kind of end result of the construction for the development that still need to be corrected. And aside from that, that, that's the remaining punch list items.
The pavement item has to do with some of the, I didn't wanna say it, but utility companies, I guess, according to the contractor, and we're working out, I guess, who's gonna repair that item. And it's very minor as far as asphalt's concerned. Some diesel tripped on the asphalt and caused a little issue. And then, looks like a, a farclift put some farks and tore up a piece of the asphalt. Very minor. We're gonna get those worked out in the next couple of days.
This time we open the floor for public, public comments, public hearing. No comments? Close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll move for approval contingent upon any issues that the staff has noted on here. Landscaping and...
I'll second. Second your motion.
Motion, boo. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So noted.
Thank you.
Staff report?
So, last month, we began the conversation about the concept of privatizing subdivision streets. I included in your packet what I feel would be the first round of revisions to the subdivision ordinance to address how we would go about that. We said we wanted to continue to discuss this, to, you know, bring it out, so we could have questions and answers. Ultimately, what I'd like to do is continue to have this as a, an item, but wait until the legislature has finalized the, the resolution, the law that allows the parish to create the taxing districts. And then, what we'll do is we'll start the second round of these changes to say, okay, if option A is privatizing all of the subdivision streets to take them off of the maintenance burden, then developer has that as an option. Or option B is to establish the taxing district to pay for the maintenance of the streets within that subdivision. And wait until the point that we have both options to send forward to the council to say, a developer has two options. They can do a private subdivision, or they can do a, a public street subdivision with this development infrastructure fee once it's been established. So, what I've given you are what I believe are the paintbrush of options of, of how I have to change the code to basically privatize all subdivisions. There's a lot, there's a lot, because it's, there's lots of interweaving in the code of how things are changed. I don't know that we have to read through all of them, especially not tonight, since we're not taking any action. But I'd like you to continue to, to look at this, continue to address some things. I know Ben had found a section of the code under the family partitions. And so, the next time I see this, I had just missed it. It talks about how a road within a family partition, once brought up to a hard surface standard, can be accepted into parish maintenance system. Well, that won't be true anymore. You'll have to bring it up, you'll have to establish the taxing district, and then you'll have to, as a group of homeowners, decide that you're gonna pay to maintain that street, and then we'll accept it into the parish maintenance system. So, I'll have to amend the little section in the family partition code. But generally speaking, that's what we're talking about. Privatize all streets and then give an option to unprivatize them by creating the taxing district for your new subdivision. So, just tonight, I don't have the measurement. But we're probably gonna add another five miles of roads to parish maintenance system, because none of these rules are in play. And by virtue of accepting the preliminary plats, we are now saying, when they're final, they're parish roads. They're added to the maintenance system, and they're added to our costs. Any questions?
Yeah, Ricky, there was some discussion last month as to whether, if these are private roads, will the post office deliver mail on a private road? Will school buses travel down a private road? I know in the past, the school system has not sent buses down private roads because of that maintenance issue, because we didn't know how that road would be maintained. So, we would, you know, make the kids come up to the end of that private road to a public road to pick them up. And I'm not sure if that's still the, the procedure that's used, but I think it is. So, that would be a concern if, if it were a large subdivision especially. How does the mail get delivered? How does, how do the, the children get picked up?
Well, I mean, we have gated subdivisions in this parish that today somehow have figured out how to get mail delivered. They have somehow figured out how to get UPS and FedEx and school buses. I'm imagining that these new developments, if they remain private, will have that figured out. We approved a gated subdivision tonight. Can Derek answer the mail and school bus question tonight? I don't know, but I'm saying we approved a gated subdivision tonight. So, this isn't the first time it's been done. Yes, we may have to just figure out those things as we go, but we're not reinventing the wheel. They, they exist today.
Ricky, they also had an article in the Creole today that was written about Transportation Committee last night looking at this half-cent sales tax again, possibly bringing that back with that yet being third possibility we'd have to look at before even considering rewriting this?
No, because it's my understanding that if that goes forward, that's a half-cent sales tax that's similar to when they did the Lanes for Change project. The Lanes for Change would simply be redirected to only parish roads, and you'd be collecting the money for upkeep and maintenance of only parish roads. The Lanes for Change, the original, the last time we did the half-cent, we were addressing intersections with state highways, with, you know, highways that weren't under parish jurisdiction. And it's my understanding that this new effort for the half-cent would be directed specifically to only parish roads.
But these would be... The Lanes for Change was very specific as to what was gonna be built with the money. And I suspect that this one would be very specific as to what can be done with it, too.
And what can't.
And what can't, right.
Yeah. Too early to tell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With respect to this, I, we talked about this earlier, I, I have a real concern about my HOA maintaining the roadways in, in our subdivision, any new subdivision. Parish, of course, that would all be grandfathered in. The parish would continue to maintain roads that are, that are in existence now. But as new subdivisions are developed and built, this decision has to be made at some point. And I'd hate to see an HOA burdened with that responsibility in a private subdivision. So, I'd much rather see some, some other method.
And I think it's a tremendous mistake to simply pass an ordinance that says all subdivisions are now private without giving the developer the option or the ability to make those public through some sort of funding mechanism.
We don't have that option right now, because those mechanisms are not yet passed.
Correct.
Through legislation.
It's my understanding that that bill, if signed by the governor, will be signed, I believe, sometime in July. And if that happens, I'm gonna wait for the council to issue a resolution for us to address it and make those changes in the code. And at that point, I will have drafted something that we'll bring back for a staff report. So, the following month, we'll have a public hearing and then send it to the council.
So, we have a ways to go.
We, we do. We have a few months. We, we do, we have a few months.
Impact fees, the Impact Fee Committee that we, that was just established, could have some positive impact on this. If, if in the future, funds that would otherwise have to come from a general fund or transportation fund could come from impact fees to do some improved, necessary improvements due to the impact, that could allow other monies to be used for, you know, for some, for maintenance of the roadways and that sort of thing. So, it's complicated, so.
Right, and, and we, we heard the project tonight that had a traffic study that says we're going to be required to build a left turn lane. And I would like to say, you know, if we've established this traffic impact fee policy, and, you know, based on 100 lot subdivision, that's 50,000, 500,000, whatever the number is, and he can use those dollars to make those improvements immediately and, you know, offset that impact, and then, you know, maybe there's a difference, maybe he only owes 100,000 at that point, and he can give that so it can be used within the district. And so, you know, I think there's a lot of tools that can be used as this moves forward.
But as we understand this, the spirit behind this is the parish is just, doesn't have the resource to continue maintenance, especially at these new roads. So, at that point, what we're saying is, the burden's on developer to come up with some constructive package to assist in the maintenance, to provide the maintenance.
Correct. Establish a district that matches the boundary of your new subdivision with there being one owner, there's one vote. You pass an ordinance that says now all the new lots created within that new district will pay this much millage every year that goes into a fund that will pay to maintain the roads within that subdivision. And, you know, if it's a 20-year, 30-year, I don't know how long the life of that is, but there will be some breakpoint that it says, you know, we've, we've collected enough money to maintain these roads for 30 years, and we'll move on.
Any public comments? That being said, close. Does this warrant approval for us?
No, sir. What I'm going to do is continue, I'm going to add the revisions that Ben found that I need to make. I'm probably going to start working on the language, I'll probably get with Lindsay and talk about the language pending the other legislative action occurring, just so I can have that ball rolling. I may include that draft language for you guys for next month. But I would just like to continue it as a staff report until everything is ready. You know, there's no reason to have a public hearing, we're not ready to do anything, we're not ready to take action.
That being said, that takes care of all items, can I get a motion to adjourn?
No, we need, we have staff.
Well, that was? Oh, there is a further staff report? Oh, there's 13.
That's Tim, yeah.
I just wanted to give a, a summary of some of the projects we have going on coming into the parish. Four of the subdivisions are still under bond. There, and that's 235 lots. There are nine subdivisions that are being constructed this time. I count the three that we heard tonight as still being under construction, because there's still some paperwork that needs to be done on that. But once those are all in, that's another 401 lots. There are two subdivisions that are still waiting to be constructed. The construction plans have already been approved, and that's 138 lots. There are two subdivisions that are under the construction plan review, and that'll be another 297 lots. And then, there are eight subdivisions that have just recently been, we're talking about, or, and just had a preliminary approval, and that's another 845 lots. So, that's a total of 1,916 lots.
Excuse me. It's a lot of impact on roads. Yeah. It's a lot.
That concludes the agenda?
Have to talk to the chair.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'll second that.
Planning Commission adjourn.